With that, you may be seated. Have real call the members, please.
Mr. Jenner, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Ricky, District Four.
I hear.
Mr. Van, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Kirby at large.
Here.
As a good start, I do want to welcome Mr. Ricky back. We had a little meeting Monday night and he was there as well at the same, so. He had a real health scare. And so we had him on Skype there for a couple of meetings, but it's sure as good to see you back.
It's great. I'll tell you what, it's great to be here.
And he was thankful there just to be able, he went three months and he was still up. He was thankful just to be able to stand, so. If you have any health allows, you're able to go and do, thank the Lord for it because of what this man went through. And to be honest with you, I didn't know if he would ever be back. But it shows what our God can do, wasn't that? Alrighty. Approved the agenda. Hope everybody's had a chance to look at it. Is there anything they need to add? Ms. Owens.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented to you.
I'll make it motion.
Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Mr. Turner, second. Any discussion? All fair vote sent aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Uh, we approve the minutes from September the first, two thousand twenty-one. Hope you've had a chance to look at it. If you have, we need a motion to approve the minutes as presented to you.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jenner, second. Any discussion? All fair vote sent aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is assist expression period and uh. The computer keeps timing out. Let me crank it up. Assist expression period is upon the meeting, but anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium. State your name, where you're from in the county, and what organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, has anyone signed up, Ms. Owens?
They have not.
Okay. That's people not wants to though, but I want to get through that. We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close assist expression. So with that, we end assist expression period.
Yeah, Mike Ratauski, Nicholsville, Virginia. I've attended the last two Board of Education meetings. And it's obvious people of Scott County could care less that we were paying for four to five hundred out of non-residents' educations. It's nice to know that this board does care. And it's fighting the fight for the people of Scott County. But I find it appalling. Out of those two meetings that I've been to. I've been the only resident there. Yes, they had a good showing last night, I'll tell you that. It was nothing more than awards. At times I get disgusted with them. People of Scott County honestly believe just don't care. And I wish there was something more I could do. I'd like to thank this board for fighting the fight for the people of Scott County. And doing what's right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? None of you want to come? Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Wonderful.
Good to see you again. We had a good conversation Saturday. The town of Dungannon has purchased the building there located in the old bank building post office, so. Had a pretty good chat with Ms. Begley, so welcome.
Well, thank you. I'm Nina Begley. And I want some property on Stony Creek, but I gave it to my daughter and son-in-law. And they're wanting to put in a campground. And there has been some. Some people that don't want it. And uh. My land joins about maybe not an acre, maybe three-fourths of an acre that the county owns. And my daughter would like to lease that property, or at least use it to put in a sand city system. And I don't think that it would be behoove the county to. Stop that process. Because this campground would bring in tax dollars. It's just the benefit of the Devil's Bathtub, or Devil's Ford. And uh, there's a lot, it's closer than the parking lot that the county already owns down there. And uh, I just think that it would be, it would be a. A benefit to the county. And I don't think that anybody should stand in the way, let one person stand in the way. Of the county getting their revenue. We're poor as Job's turkey, as my mother used to say. Yes, it is. So, that's my saying. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Well, I take my, there's silence. There's not, uh, so we will come out of assist expression period. And I want to thank Mr. Ratauski for coming and speaking. He had been to the school board. Yeah, we have kind of beat this around some about out of county, out of state. Kids coming to our county, uh, free of charge and. I have issues with it too. I really do. It's gone on for decades. It ain't just something that's happened recently. Uh, we uh. Would like to see something happen. Tuition, enrollment fee or something, but school board chose not to do that. That's their decision to do, so we'll get through it the best way that we can. They are funded this year and we'll just see what happens in the future. But anyway. Uh, the last number that I got was three hundred ninety-eight kids coming out of county. About over thirteen thousand dollars a kid. It is a huge revenue source for our schools. Our schools operating, I think, they really do a good job, so. Uh, there's more than that. The out of county, that's living Virginia students. Uh, but the number did drop from four hundred forty-two to three hundred ninety-eight is the last numbers I saw. Uh, we'll deal with it as we can, but uh. We just got to do what we have to do. And as one person. Uh, said, "It's not right. Y'all want to raise our taxes for these kids coming here." Parents work East or whatever. Make a hundred thousand a year, and you're going to raise taxes on us to educate their kids for free. So anyway, the school board has chose not to have an enrollment fee or a tuition. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Ratauski for coming. Any comments here from this board before we move to the next item? The issue on the, on Stony Creek, I've been up there, visited that property. It is the kind of a touchy situation we have there. Uh, our. Our attorney, she has looked at this inside and out. There's some that's here that's for it and some is not. Uh, and the property sold to bring it back today, the property was condemned was the two thousand two when that happened. You know, Nina, when it happened?
Yeah, it was about two thousand two. It was after the flood, whichever one it was.
Yeah, that's when Gray Baker lost his life.
Yeah.
Okay. It's two thousand two, and so what happened, that property was made up to the county and it cannot be used for any structures or anything that's in the flood plain, and so it's sitting there. I know you all have taken care of it, the, the, the other folks too there, the uh. The maids have taken care of it. And so they're wanting to lease it for part of the, of a, a proposed campground. And they need it for the field bed, the sand type field bed sewer system for the campground. Uh, it's been asked before to lease that and, and we, and it wasn't allowed. We didn't lease it. Uh, but the purpose before, I'm assuming, was just to make it look good, but they're wanting to use it for a small business. I think we should promote small business. Uh, there's things there that's needed on that, on that creek. We do have property there for the parking. She is correct. What the property they have is closer than the property that the county has there where the. Uh, parking area is. We have the toilets all installed. We have Wi-Fi stuff there, but to put the campground in would be, I think would be a good thing. I really do. So we'll open up discussion here if we, I know our attorney said we don't have to vote on it today. Uh, and she's looked at this inside and out and she's not so sure that we, what we should do with it. Uh, she's gives her opinion. I know you all have your opinion about. You've seen the emails from, from the folks that proposed to do this. Uh, so anyway, discussion here before we go any further with it. Anyone? And please don't leave it up to me to be the mouthpiece.
They have another option that they can do besides this?
Yes, uh, the engineer on the subject that had asked about the overflow onto the county property. I asked him if there's other options. The other option would be a treatment plant. That. Would cost about the same as the sand system. The sand system is a expensive type of field bed. It's not the normal aggregate stone field bed. It's more expensive. But that's what he, he told me that it'd be comparable in cost or maybe even a little cheaper to have a treatment plant. However, a treatment plant, just like the one we have at the animal shelter, is a similar type of system. Requires annual monitoring. You have to, this is twice a year, but there's a report you have to do to DQ every year. The process is that it's being denied septic by the health department, and they're getting a permit to DQ for the treatment center. I don't know if the whites have contacted, uh, septic or not.
We haven't. But I'd likely that it might be only purpose. We want to lease the property. With the property, we can move forward. That little piece of property, which is only a hundred and twenty foot wide, actually. Can make us a progress, uh, our entrance.
It's literally a piece of our property. There is no separate.
I'm gonna allow, I want y'all to come up here so we can, just come up here if you would, that way I want everybody to be able to hear you and uh. We usually don't do it this way, but we're in assist expression, but we need to hear from you when we decide this one, get this, we should we get this right.
Yeah, he always tells me, I speak a little mousy anyway. Um, this piece of property is not separate from our property. It's literally the same piece of property. The county piece, the line goes. Like it would be through your front yard. So without it, our hands are tied in a lot of things that we can do. And we want this campground to be something the entire county can be proud of. Not just have to keep it on a certain piece of this property. And we could certainly follow the FEMA guidelines on what is allowed.
The folks that are proposing this, do they live there or they just own the property occasionally?
They do not live there. I think they visit, mom could answer this, maybe twice a year.
And the reason I'm asking that, because if you live there and you're, you know, there are three hundred sixty-five days a year that it would be maybe kind of a hard to live close to a campground. But just a place they come to occasionally to hang out with. As far, I talked to your mom about maintaining it, and I think you all, your family have maintained it, and sometimes the, uh, the maids they come and do, they mow some too.
When I mowed our lawn, if it needs mowing, I would mow. Back several years ago, I excepted a bush hog over there and had a bush hog the whole property. I lived and grew it up that high. And after that, we, we've been mowing every week, or every other week anyway.
Danny, let me, let me say that almost two years ago, when we were running for this office, this is one of the things that I was approached about. And that was camping close to Devil's Bathtub. There was a group, the guy that called me, there was a group of campers that were even going to Big Stone. I don't know where it is in Big Stone, and, and short trips, weekend trips. And he said if we had a place around Fort Blackmore or up on Stony Creek around Devil's Bathtub, we'd go there instead. So there, I agree with you. There is a, a need for this, but. The, the lease, and I'm, I'm playing catch up here, but how long would the lease be for and, and what control? We, we wouldn't have any control, would we? Over, over anything if it was leased. How long would the lease be? Does it just have to be determined later?
Well, with all due respect, you have no control over it now. I mean, truly. It's just a piece of property out in what's currently the middle of nowhere. That people who live there have maintained. Because you have to keep grass cut because of what might be crawling around.
And to be honest with you, uh, this year, we have worked and spent money, rose, while the roads lifted that big around, you couldn't even see the spring at that time. So it, it's really not been maintained at all, other than a little bit mowing.
Very little of it can be mowed. The rest of it's just overgrowth.
Well, you've done that, Danny. You told us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On those properties, the, the reason that's been mowed at all is for the benefit of the people around it that wanted to keep it up front. We have, the county has no interest in maintaining the property. And our obligation to FEMA is that it remains wobbly. Uh, you know, we bought, I think nine properties during that process, and most of them have grown up and reverted back to, to wobbly. This particular piece of property's been mowed because the people beside it wanted to keep it private, to keep it critical. So the county doesn't have an interest in keeping it.
And we actually go over on holiday and put the family, and we grill out.
Right.
You know, there's a big cake for you, and we've been doing that for years.
When I looked at it, you also did, you did, somebody put an entrance to it, uh, moved the berm and stuff, and who authorized that? Do you have any idea who did that or why it was even done?
We, we know who did it.
We know exactly who did it.
There was no authorization. It was.
Well, I seen that berm had been removed, and that could possibly be part of the flood control. If the creek did get up, that. It's like a levee, a little smaller, it could actually keep the water off of it. And so I was surprised to see that, that wall had been removed. But y'all did not do that.
No, that rock wall has been there for a hundred years. And it survived the flood that killed my dad's uncle, Gray Baker. Uh, but it didn't survive a, whatever was wrought pushing him.
Probably a greater blade that there that's been managed.
Well, that was kind of disappointing to see that, because whoever encroached on that to do that, uh, you know, I don't know why that would need to be done, and so. It looked like somebody trying to make an entrance onto, onto the county property, which. You know, I'm not, listen, I'm not, I'm not a big advocate of the government even owning property. I think that there's, the government owns too much property. I really do. But on that situation, the PVA thing is a flood thing, and I understand why that is county property, but uh. If you don't get this lease, can your campground happen?
No. It cannot. We won't have room to move.
Not only that.
Literally won't have room to move without this piece of property.
You know, we're going to have to have repeat customers.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we want, repeat customers. And honestly, we're afraid right now. If, if we don't have control of that piece of property. Our neighbor, I'm afraid we don't have any repeat customers. And our driveway, I go into the property, actually splits between us and the county.
Right.
And the county actually splits our land.
We own another piece of property on the other side of the county.
And it's land.
And it's land.
Will you use that for camping later?
It's actually, we, my goal is to have a general store on it at some point. And that's in the future, when everything gets started. Uh, but it's not part of the plan right now.
How many campsites on the original, on the side you're talking about now?
Twenty RV sites.
No, ten large RV sites.
Four, five, well, fifteen RVs and like twenty, twenty-five.
In the future, could you double that on the other side?
No, we couldn't double it. Uh, however, we are having the land surveyed. We talked to Ray Colberston. It's never been surveyed. Originally is twenty-one acres. And I'm not sure anybody knows what that twenty-one acres actually is. So once we find that out, we'll know.
That's mostly a lot of mountainside or hillside, isn't it?
Oh, it is.
It's not even usable for anything as far as the campground.
Except for tree houses, and that's in the future.
It's on the creek, what you're planning is on the creek?
It is, yes.
The road separates them and the creek. The creek is between them and the, the road between them and the creek. Anyway, any other questions for these folks? Or comments?
Danny, do you think we should go look at it before, I don't know where it's at or nothing about it. Should we look at it before we make a decision?
I think it'd be a great idea. Of course, Sally, our attorney, uh, Ms. Cackler, sorry. And she said we don't have to vote on it today, and I think it'd be a good idea. We'll just go load up and go. We can go to it at a time, or we can have a special call meeting on Stony Creek and we all go. So.
Let mom go ahead and time and she'll have your mail.
Yeah. That is doable. We can do that. If y'all want to go as a group or go to it at a time, so. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to look at it. I've not been over there. The only, you know, where, where it came through the planning commission, do you think we need to, I mean, since new things have come up, does it need to go back before then?
I wouldn't think so. Ms. Cackler would use, I mean, they have, they have approved this and sent it to us, so.
Actually, when we went in front of the planning commission, there was one of the, the members actually.
He mentioned.
He mentioned us leasing the property.
Because it makes, and when you see the property, you'll understand completely why we need this for this campground.
Well, I say I would look at it. I would certainly do.
What's your timeline? Hopefully next summer you can have it going?
We want to have it going by spring.
But honestly, this piece of property has been the whole day. We would have been, we're talking to the people in, um, Avington about the wheel because it's commercial. We're holding out on that permit. We're not doing anything else until we know what we need.
So you're ready to go?
We are.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Has that property ever been used for anything by the county?
No. Other than this, it's this, it's this piece of property that's just useless as far as the way the guidelines are. You can't build on it or anything. Once that flood happened and PVA did that. It, it, uh, it's, it can be used for what they're wanting to use it for and something like that, but it cannot have a structure or anything like that.
It can have a structure with electricity. Uh, the deed actually says, because I've read all these deeds over and over. It can have a reservoir. That has electricity, obviously. But it can't have a structure you can live in. You could have, uh. If we did lease it, we'd have picnic tables, uh, the spring he mentioned that comes out the middle of the Sycamore Creek. We have, um. Pretty bridges. Uh, we could put shelters because based on what I'm reading, a shelter would be allowed. So the property is certainly usable. For what we need.
I think if we could, and Ms. Cackler, you can get in this too, about us all going and setting a date to do that and then to be a, a little meeting. And the reason I'm saying that, because I'd like to say, me and Mr. Ricky went, I want to hear everybody's opinion at the same time. And just go back and forth and do us to go at a time and not have to have, have to do that. But your thoughts, Ms. Cackler, about that?
That's a deal if you want to adjourn to there, to have a meeting one day. That's entirely a deal.
Is there other property, is somebody else's property border that too, or is it just yours? Or is there a road that separates somebody else's property? I mean, is there, is there somebody else's property that directly links to that little thing?
Now, the paper from the piece on the upper end where she's mentioned putting the, the little stalwart. Bill can tell you right there.
The whites proposed campground is in this area, and they own approximately up to this conifer tree right here. And the county line goes along with my. Little mouse hand is going, and extends up just shy of this power pole here. So it's this strip right here that the county owns. Then, uh, Gilmer Mead owns this property here. So there, there's no delineation or anything that really shows when the, like, owner's property ends and the county begins and. When the county ends and when the whites begin, along this stretch. It's just been mowed and maintained. Uh, Colberston, uh, surveying, didn't go up and re-marked our corners. So we have a good idea of where those lines actually are.
And you are in one end on the other side of the county?
We do, right there.
Yeah, we're in that for that.
But can you build on it?
Potentially. We have a lot of work to do to that.
Take a lot of great work with that to do.
It would. Uh, yeah, we're looking at spending.
Right.
Yeah, a lot.
What y'all thought about this going over there? I mean, I think we should.
Yeah, I think we should.
And, uh, but I, I'd like to allow the whole seven of us to go. And, uh, and Ms. Cackler, I'd like you to go too, if you would. Because she does the double, the do's and the don'ts.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was probably going to interrupt, but, um, I did want to say, VDOT hasn't been approached about a entrance permit yet, so that doesn't need to be part of this discussion.
And your name?
Joey Mullins.
That's what I thought. I thought that was Joey.
Actually, I did tell him we don't.
Yeah, our entrance to the campground was already being approved.
On your office process?
Yes.
Okay. Who has it been approved?
Uh, Bill Favis's name. Who was it?
I can't remember his name, but I called him.
When?
And he said if we need any other assistance that he would get such, that he would look at it.
When was the time?
And we didn't hear back from him. That's been probably a year ago.
It's been over a year ago. This process has been going on.
There, there has to be a land use department for an entrance, so that's, that's where, like, and like I said, I oversee the land use for the, for VDOT this residency, so that's.
The driveway's already there. So he came to make sure the driveway was perfect for what we need it to be, and it's perfect for what we need it to be.
Uh, like I said, I, it just, it doesn't ring available to me, so.
Is any of the maids here? Anybody from that family here? I'd like them to be there too. And, but I set a date, and I think if that's okay, we'll set a date to go there, and when we get through here, we'll turn to that, so.
Bill would need to go with us.
Absolutely.
Father would have to.
And Freda too. I mean, we need to make sure we get, you know, people with consortium directors and our thoughts and stuff, so, freedom. Uh, so I set a date and went to go. I mean, one day next week. What y'all want to do?
Next week would be great.
Monday? Would that work for you, Ms. Kirby? Would that work for you on Monday evening?
It should, for me.
Monday, Columbus Day?
It is.
Yes.
So you get to work on it there? I'm kidding. We'll do it. What about Tuesday?
Yeah, we got PSA.
We got PSA.
That morning?
That morning. Hold it afternoon. And I have a meeting at one thirty, so. It is Columbus Day. But it usually don't last, yeah, right on thirty minutes.
Well, on Tuesday, if we do it Tuesday evening, four to five o'clock, evening that way. Jeremy, you're grounded. That's not going to work for you.
I could do five.
Do what?
Tuesday. I could do five on Tuesday.
I'll be driving to Richmond on Tuesday evening to go to meeting in Richmond. I'll be driving to Richmond on Tuesday evening to go to meeting in Richmond Wednesday morning or Wednesday morning.
What about Thursday?
Will you be back Thursday?
I'll be back Thursday.
I can't do Thursday evening. Wednesday, let's go with that one.
Oh, I can't do Thursday evening.
Okay, what about Wednesday, the?
Is everybody available Monday?
Pardon?
Is everybody available Monday?
Yeah.
I can do five.
Yeah.
Get you a couple hours comp time, are you?
Can Miss Kate Lee Big Monday get five?
Monday at five? Everybody good with that?
I'll try.
All right.
You have a volleyball schedule, do you?
It's variable.
Yeah, I know what it changes every day.
And I would like to end on, for anybody that's ever mowed this property, used the property for whatever, obvi- obviously, it's not our goal to make anybody stay off of any of this property. We're welcoming people from all over the world. So, if we do get the lease, that's simply to benefit us in what we can do with the campground. It's not to keep anybody off.
Right.
It's not.
We don't want to keep people off. We want them.
All right, I understand that. But anyway, we will do that and see, like, Monday will be a good, a good date, and we'll, we'll all be there, hopefully.
As of right now, I probably won't be able to. But I'll, I'll, I'll get over there. You all go on, I'll, I'll talk to you.
The boundary lines are obvious.
Yeah.
Being Larry Martin.
Is it close to that roof bolt we looked at?
It's twenty-one feet away.
Twenty-one feet away from that.
It was painted orange. They thought that was, it's on, on up the, the road, twenty-one feet?
It was twenty-one feet into the county law.
Okay, all right, I'm with you. All righty, we will, when we leave here, we will turn till five o'clock on Monday evening and hopefully. And everybody be there if they can be.
Very thank you.
All right, thank you. All righty. Next item is item seven, public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend the ordinance adopting and incorporating motor vehicle provisions and other crimes and offenses of the Code of Virginia, section seven dash two, seven dash three, seven dash four, seven dash seven, seven dash nine, and seven dash ten to reflect recent changes in the Code of Virginia, Virginia two marijuana laws and related offenses. I can't believe we have this to do this on marijuana, but that's the way it is now. So, with that, we'll go into the public hearing. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, we'll come out of the public hearing and we will vote on this. You know what we, what we're doing here, what it's about. So, any discussion, or if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Can we let it be known what, what is the purpose, and Sally can help us out with this, our attorney? Just the reason why that we're doing this? I mean, this is something that's already happened, and obviously, there's some reasons that we're, we're doing this for.
The Commonwealth Attorney's Office asked for these changes to our criminal code that we adopted last year because there have been changes to the state code for the marijuana laws. So, our ordinance needs to reflect that.
So, we're really, in a sense, not really changing anything, which the document already has been changed.
It's already changed, we just. Good question, though, if we, if we need to. Any other discussion?
You know, I've, I've got several reservations, you know, about the marijuana deal, but, you know, I personally know a guy right now that has cancer. And when he has his treatments, he gets deathly sick. But he, he is able to use the marijuana, and it helps him. You know, it's, it's really no different than alcohol. You know, any, anything that you abuse is harmful to you. But, you know, I think we need to look at everything and, you know, I don't, I don't agree with, you know, just for the.
Recreation.
I don't agree with that, no. But, you know, but the way these things are, all that, they link it together, you know. So, you know, it's just something, something I think we need to do.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
According to the laws and mores, it's rated in substance one or substance two. Under substance one, meaning that it's a illegal drug, it's never been studied. That's the parameters of that, which has not been that for a long time. Marijuana's been studied over the last forty years. A lot of homes, a lot of people have been ruined over marijuana. I'm just saying, as far as we don't even act what our laws and mores are. Because if it's been studied, then they need to take it off and reclassify it. That's all I have to say.
Well, thanks, sir. Sally, I, I assume the laws of the, of the Code of Virginia were relaxed. Is that true? And we're talking about motor vehicles? They were, the laws were less?
Motor vehicles, that's just the name of the ordinance. That's just included in the name of the ordinance. This is mostly just about the marijuana laws that have changed.
Now, this ordinance, the way I read it, is not a mere, both the state already has approved. That's all we're doing is saying, well, it's there. We can't do anything to change it. So, but that is, is my take on it.
Does that not, does this not allow our monies from this to be kept locally in some kind of way?
If they charge under our ordinance.
Right.
Yeah, they can keep them.
And that's part of the reasoning behind this?
That's the reason we have a criminal code to begin with, is so that deputies can charge under that and keep the money.
And under the new, they can grow up to four plants. I was talking to one of the deputies, how they enforce that. He said they got to have their names or everything on each plant, so they know it's theirs, and which is the silliest thing ever. But it's proposed that you can have up to five pounds initially, and the general assembly talked to Mr. Kilgore about that. And he said he couldn't believe it. They didn't realize how much five pounds of marijuana was. So, they moved it back to four plants that they could grow. But anyway, any other comments on this? If not, come out of the public here, but need to, need to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Do you make a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Chairman, a second. Any discussion? All the fair people saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next item is another public hearing on the possible adopt, adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance to reflect the law as it now reads in title two point two, chapter forty-three of the Code of Virginia. So, we're mirroring that. We opened the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on this? Just a formality more than anything else, I guess, but something we have to do. Anyway. If not, we'll close the public hearing. And if you've read all the, a lot of pages in that, if you read, I read some of it, just, you know, but we got, Ms. Caven, she reads that stuff and all the do's and doubts and legalities of it. So, anyway, do we have a motion to approve this procurement, procurement ordinance? Mr. Kirby made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All the fair people saying aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is item nine, Michelle Brooks, Town of Gate City.
I hope this off because I can't think with those things on, I'm bleeding. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Michelle Brooks. I am the town attorney for Gate City. And I'm here requesting, and I, I, do you all have a packet in your information of documents from me? What I'm requesting is, is that you all, by resolution, amend your building ordinance to allow the Town of Gate City, and I can read you the, the language there, but essentially, it's to get a demolition permit for blighted properties within the Town of Gate City. Currently, your all's ordinance does not permit any demolition or building permit to be done if there's outstanding taxes. And there are very good reasons for doing that, and I understand you having it. However, the Town of Gate City, there's a number of properties that we have identified through our property maintenance, which people essentially have walked away from. And what it's doing is it's damaging the adjacent property owners and things of that nature. I'm not trying to circumvent your ordinance in any way, shape, form, or fashion, but we are asking that you allow us to remove these nuisances, these blighted properties. And if you see in their property, there's a number of these. These are the ones we have identified at this point. And I've also included our real estate taxes. Are actually, since we have been aggressive in enforcing property maintenance, in fact, our tax revenues have gone up instead of down. So, what we're asking you to do, we're not asking you to affect your ordinance in any way, except for the fact to allow us, or if we were doing a, a housing grant or something like that, or through our property maintenance. Generally, these are just some examples. That's not all of them. We are actually in the process of working on Park Street, a fairly extensive housing redevelopment down by the park. And we're probably going to do a phase two of that and identify other blighted neighborhoods within the Town of Gate City. I think it will benefit the county because, of course, Gate City is part of the county, but it also protects our citizens. There's one of these, for example, nine forty-six West Jackson, there's a severe rodent problem. You wouldn't take much to imagine with the type of weeds and all of that, that, and there's children across the street. So, nobody wants to live across to that. This is not going to cost you all anything. Your tax lien will still be in place. The town will pay all costs for demolition and for the permit itself. And we are aggressively seeking to recover those costs through our property maintenance through TACS, and we've been pretty successful in doing so. And we would also, I know you all probably, I think, Ms. Cackley and I have spoken a number of times about this. You all are using them as well for your tax.
Yes.
Is there any question that I can answer for you all about this?
The only question, Ms. Cackley, that would apply to Gate City only, is that correct? If this resolution would apply to any other incorporated town?
I don't think I put it, made it specific in the resolution that I did, but this was just a, something to propose to you all. It mirrors another ordinance.
Well, the reason I ask that, and I'd like to see it in any incorporated towns where they could do that, because I mean, it's going to improve the property once you do some of this.
Yes, sir.
But it'd be a county-wide ordinance or just apply to Gate City only. And I didn't mean the blind side jump.
It's just a resolution. It's not an ordinance. It's a resolution.
Yeah.
And it would apply. The way she got it written and proposed, it's open. It's not specific to Gate City.
But it would only be federal, state, or local funding would be the only way that it could be done. Joe Citizen couldn't come in and do the same thing.
The reason I ask, I'm, I'm hoping it would be county-wide, any, because there's other areas where you see this, and you'd hope that something would happen. And partially burned houses that even where I live, you can see them, and they're inside the corporation limits, that. Need something done with them. And so, maybe this will help those towns to do something, recoup their money from the property owners to, to take care of it.
Absolutely. We're, we've got that on our tax rolls. Now, we've included it in and seeking all those costs back.
Ms. Brooks, last weekend, I hadn't seen your hand out there, but this past weekend, I drove around through town just to take a look. And you've got a Yalick and Dim sign on most of these houses, and I certainly agree with you, they need to be taken down. Does the current landowner retain the lot, the land it's on, after you do the demolition?
Well, what, what we are in the process of doing with those, if, if we're granted the, what I'm asking today, we'll, we'll demolish the property, and then we'll go through the process of, of asking for it to be sold at option, and then we'll recoup the cost out of that.
Okay. The, the, the tax that's required on these, that's owed, is not that much, is it?
No, it isn't.
So, it wouldn't hurt the city or the, the county to go ahead and do this?
Well, I don't think it would ultimately. Now, and those tax dollars are not going anywhere. So, the lien that you have against the property would get paid once the property is turned over. So, it's, you might get the money sooner if, if we're able to do that.
Looking at these, these houses, some around Gate City, you can't tell if they're abandoned or not. There's so much stuff around them, on the porch and in the yard. I know there's probably a law about abandoned vehicles, but I wish there was something you could do to, to help clean up some of these porches and yards.
We actually are, we're in the, we have been trying to do it. It's, it's a big job. We've, we've had some turnover, and the person who's, who's been doing that at the town. But we are in the process of trying to do that neighborhood by neighborhood, just to try to get the worst of, of the offenders within the town to make it look as, as nice as it can.
So, when these properties are sold, the taxes, will we pay them?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Otowski showed me a picture somewhere for Nicholsville one. It's pretty dilapidated too, but it's outside of the Nicholsville corporation limits. And, but we have them all over the county. As far as doing something in county, we, we probably could, because there's dilapidated structures everywhere, all over the county. A lot of them may look like it's been, it may be used for a barn or something. A lot of old houses, they'll do that. So, you never know what they're going to do out there somewhere in the county. But then, inside the corporation limits, I think that this is the right approach.
Yes, thank you, sir. Anything else?
Anything, anybody?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good, good presentation. I did look at all those pictures that you sent, and there was a lot of them, and, and they look, property looked really bad. I would want it adjoining me. I mean, if they're that, they're that bad. Some are getting Steve the Winders brush, stuff growing up around them, so it's pretty bad. Any discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Anyway.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Brick has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Sue, get you next time. Any discussion? All the fair people saying aye? Aye, opposed? So, what's your carry now? So, we're with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
All right, thank you. Next item is item ten, VDOT road abandonment. She's got a lot of emails from Ms. Hood, and the people's been contacting her, so if you would. Morning.
Morning. Tim Anliker. I'm from Gutfield, Virginia.
What was your last name again?
Anliker.
Spell that. Okay, yes, sir.
And I, I live on Angler's Way, real close to Muske. And a few years ago, I bought a parcel of property on Muske Lane. Muske Lane's a dead-end road. It's got three landowners who are also with me this morning. The Harrises own the parcel of land on the east side of Muske. I own the middle section, and Tim and John Chambers own the parcel of land that's happened Tennessee and happened Virginia. Since I purchased the property, I've been using the old tobacco barn as storage. And, you know, recently, there's been escalation of problems. My four-wheeler and trailer were stolen a few weeks ago from the barn. You know, I didn't mind people going down on my property and fishing, but since it's a dead-end road, there's no place to turn around. So, the hayfields began to be used as a turnaround spot, and it seems like I'm constantly picking trash up along the road anymore. So, I've asked people not to, not to trespass anymore. I'm just looking for the county to make this a private road, a private driveway for the pre-residents that own the property on that parcel. The road doesn't go anywhere. It deadends at the Tennessee line. And the landowners who own the property belong to that road are here in support of that.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Chambers, and my brother and I, J.D. Brown, we're half brothers. Ended up with the property. We've been there since nineteen seventy-two. And I can't tell you how many times I've had to chase off poachers, and they're using that road that's only maintained basically when y'all have elections. The road commission comes down there and puts gravel out. And I've tried a lot of times to catch these people. They see me coming from a, you're on a couple of hundred acres. And you're on the other end, they see you coming, they go right back to their vehicles and turn around and get out. There's only about three quarter. There's only about three-quarters of a mile road from the culvert off the main road to our driveway. And I'm assuming, which we've all spoke, we'd like to take control of the maintenance over that and lock and put a gate up right there next to the culvert on the far side of the culvert. This has been going on for a long time, I've been there since 72. And that's what, it's the only thing input I can take to what I've seen. I have cattle, we actually had cattle stolen where they've used that road to come down in there and steal some calves. But that's been a while. And that's all I got to say, guys.
You're the first landowner after you go down Muske Lane, is that correct?
We're at the very end. The first landowner is George Anonah on that little parcel, and then Tim's next, and then when you see that dotted line there down towards the end, we got forty-something, or forty-nine acres in Virginia, and the rest is in Hancock County.
Okay, and the culverts you're talking about is where you turn down Muske Lane off of Angler's?
Right, you see where that second barn is?
Yeah.
There, see that little culvert, that creek that goes right there? There's a culvert there, but the first culvert's right there off the main road at Muske Lane. That's, I got confused, sorry about that. But as soon as you turn off Muske Lane, the culvert's right there.
This won't affect no other landowners, will it? It won't landlock nobody's land, right?
We're all here.
Okay.
We all want the same thing. We want to come together and control what comes in and what goes out. The only thing the county has is the maintenance on that road, that's only three-quarters of a mile with that. Thank you.
Anyone else? To do this, Sally, to do an official abandonment, it takes a public hearing, that's what I mean, is.
Can you have Mr. Mullins here, who can help us with that?
Yeah, I'll be delighted to address the board, but that's the, and that is correct, we would need to do a public hearing. It is a decision of the board on whether to abandon a secondary road. What I've got up here on the screen, this is just, and there were actually two requests, I don't know if Ms. Wade, if she is here as well, but...
We wasn't sure she would be able to make it.
Okay, okay. So anyway, there were two recent abandonment requests, and they're shown on this exhibit. The one that we're talking about on Muske Lane is the top one here, that's Route 720. It does, it goes from Angler's Lake Road down to the Tennessee line, and it was added to the secondary system in 1935. In the system, it says .65 miles, and, I mean, whenever it was added, and it's .5 in what's shown on the map, there are sometimes discrepancies like that, it's not really uncommon. But, sorry, the, with that one, I think as one of the board members has stated, it's, you know, you mainly are concerned about, are you going to landlock a property owner? Are you going to, are there public utilities that might be in the right-of-way that you have to look at, do you need to have an easement to maintain those things like that? So that's basically what I recommended, was have the citizens come express their interest to the board, and then we can, I can work with the board, the county, your county attorney, and we can decide what would be best. And then if the board is agreeable and would like to pursue abandoning it, we can hold a public hearing and do an actual official resolution for that after doing that.
We can start the process by doing that, and if all the property owners, hopefully they will know that if we do that, you know, once it's taken, we don't want to landlock anybody.
Right.
And so that's the whole deal, the reason we did, we would have to do that, but y'all are more on this than I am. But anyway, we will do what we need to do with it and see what will be done. But if all the property owners, to me, if they want that use, if they want people to add roads, they're taking them away, so that's unusual to, the property owner wanting to be abandoned, at least they'll be taking out the maintenance, and so too, they don't want to do anything for the maintenance owner.
Right. And was there a, I guess, my assumption was the entire road to be abandoned, I don't know.
Well, the Road 720 is originally a bell road from about 25 years ago.
Yeah.
If you don't have a horse, you're not going to go through it.
Yeah. We have a lot of older roads and right-of-ways in various degrees, so, I mean, that's kind of my perspective on it. If the board wants to pursue further, we can certainly support that.
Do we follow the code section where we post it in three places for 30 days?
Oh, John Bowling with VDOT is, he's probably our most familiar with all the specific ones, but yeah, we'll make sure that we're doing the right section of the code for it.
Because I think public hearing is not necessarily, it's the way I read it.
Okay.
You post it in three places for 30 days, if nobody complains, then you just go ahead with it, you don't have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
But we'll follow John Bowling's.
Sure, well, you're the professional with that, that's why I say, I'm not a legal professional, so, I'm a professional engineer.
We don't want to confuse the two.
Yeah, yeah. I just dabble in the VDOT side of the code, so. And the second one, the request that we had was abandoning the last, it's about .27 miles of Route 757. This is, I don't know the name of the road there, but it goes back, the property owner that's requesting it, kind of a similar situation, they own all the adjacent property, and we're interested in basically abandoning that last segment. We would, in this case, need to work with them to have a adequate turnaround, since that would cut, you know, the end of the road and the state main and soft further up. So we would basically have to construct, and that might be something that we're, in talking with the property owner, being able to do a t-turnaround, they may have to donate a little additional right-of-way to accommodate that before that turnaround and end of the road, so. But that can be something we can discuss as well, if the board's interested in pursuing that one.
Am I correct, that road is, it's at the Red Light and Death Field?
Yes, yeah.
And that's temperate on the left?
Yes, that, the large building shown there in the middle would be temperate.
Are you going to abandon it from the pink balloon, is that going down, and leave the, from there up to the road?
Yes, yes. So the, up to, tying into 58421, that will still remain all in the system, it's just the last.
There's a lot of houses on that first section.
Right, yeah, it's just roughly the last quarter of a mile that they're interested in having abandoned.
Depot Lane, I think's the name of that, Depot Lane?
Okay, that does sound.
Yeah, yeah.
It's named after Kenny Fanning, probably. Kenny's got a house on that road, okay.
That's where the radio station used to be.
It is.
And as I said, the common things are making sure we don't landlock, you know, by doing some abandonment or otherwise damage of the property owner or a utility owner by them no longer having access to maintain their facilities.
All right.
All right. Thanks, sir. Quick question.
Yeah, sure.
The mowing has gone county, they spoke, will start Monday, I think, is what Jackie said.
Yes, the third round of primaries will be underway, and the, our ordinary maintenance, though, for primary mowings, we usually try to do three cycles each year. That third cycle, we try to get it as close to the end of the season so that once it gets cut, we have a frost come through and we're not having to go back out there and redo stuff. So it is getting a little high, I, we, you know, we're well aware of that, but it is, I believe it's next, if not later this week, next week, it will be beginning that third mowing cycle. And crews are very close to finishing up all the secondary routes, or actually, I guess the secondary route's the second mowing cycle already done, so. It's definitely a busy time of year, we're getting ready for snow season and trying to get the, do all the inspecting the equipment and get that underway. We've got several of the rural rustic routes and things that we're trying to get wrapped up, so.
But they mow three times, is that correct?
Yes.
They mowed one time at that moment this year, maybe they did mow two, but I was only mowing once, just one time, but I missed it.
The primaries around May, we did a mowing cycle. The second one would have been around June, July, and then the third one is about to start.
I must have missed the second one somewhere. All right.
I sent an email about some guard rail and adding a frame, and you sent back about the address, did they ever find where that was, where we was talking about?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, they, Charlie had gone out there to look at it. We are, you know, like a lot of things, we're trying to deal with supply shortages and labor shortages and stuff, so it's a little difficult sometimes to get the guard rail work underway, but that one was, it was a new request, if I recall.
Yeah, it's harder than I know.
And we are looking at trying to possibly utilize county safety and operational improvement monies to help address some of those needs. Right now, there's not really a good source of funding new guard rail requests in the county, so that may be one option, once we get a new escalation contract in place for the residency. It's not a lot of funding through that, but it can, you know, particularly where we do have instances like that, where there's documented crashes and things like that, we can try to help address some of them.
Well, that's not part of road abandonment, we got you up here, if I have time, each of this other stuff, so.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for Mr. Mullins?
Will this abandonment go hand-in-hand with the first one, or will they be separate? Will there be a public hearing for this one?
They'll be separate.
The same route?
Yeah, same process.
Was authorized, you'd advertise that, correct? The public hearing?
I'll reach out to Mr. Bowling and get the process that he recommends.
Authorized, we'll work with it.
All right, I think that's fine.
Yeah, there's certain ones that VDOT will do, but that's usually discontinuances and the ones that require CPB approval. I'm not sure if this one actually falls under that category, so we would go whichever routes required for that.
All right, anything else for Mr. Mullins?
I have several things, but I won't hold you, you're not staying, you're going to be leaving, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing that was brought up in my district, Nash Creamery, you know, they've been distributing their milk throughout the county, you know, it's a finished product, you know, grade A milk, but anyway, they have, where their farm is, their farm is actually on both sides of the road, and they move their cattle from one side of the road to the other basically every day. And they were asking for maybe some sort of a sign showing a cattle crossing. I've saw them in places, I don't know if I've saw one in Virginia.
Yeah.
But it seemed like I've saw them in other states, but is there something that we might be able to do?
So they are moving their herd across?
Okay.
Yeah, there are warning signs that can be utilized, and actually, I think I saw recently, there was an update to some of the dangers and stuff, but yeah, I don't know that I've seen a request. We did have a tractor warning sign request that was, I forget, it was somewhere in Scott County, I can't remember what exactly road, but we recently installed one on one of those. It was, you know, once again, same thing, they have quite a big distance there between two of their parcels, and it was actually maybe toward, near Raco Hospital, I believe, because there was a lot, one of those instances where there's a lot of traffic, and that's one of the things that drives whether or not you'll install a sign, is if there's a lot of traffic and you're going to be interacting, then sometimes that makes sense.
There's a lot of traffic, I actually live on the road, and, you know, there's not a, you know, I think I brought it up, it's something almost a year ago, about some speed limit signs. Jackie said something about those, those roads, certain money was used to surface those roads back several years ago, and he thought that that, a certain type of money was used that you could go ahead and put speed limit signs up or something, I don't know the whole details, but.
Yeah, if it's a rural rustic, they usually have a statutory 35 that gets posted as part of it.
If, they don't have that.
Okay.
It's Sabre Chapel Road and Count's Creek Road, there's actually two roads there. But I'll, I'll get you a list of freedom, we'll get you some.
That'll be good.
I could hold you all up.
Anything else?
More than liable, yeah.
Mr. Mullins, I have a couple requests that my residents have made.
Okay. Yeah, I'll definitely, if you want to send those to me, I'll be glad to take them, we'll put, and I've mentioned before, we've got a work order request system that we, it helps to keep them from falling off the radar, basically. We make sure they get to the, if it's a maintenance request, it goes to the area headquarters. If it's something that we need to get a traffic study, then we can actually assign that to them, so.
Yeah, I actually got a call yesterday, it was Ponderosa Road about some drainage issues, but it'd been like four months ago, but they, I guess, y'all are behind, and all this COVID stuff, we understand that.
A lot of, if it's an engineering study request, we've only got so many resources, so it sometimes takes a little bit to get to those, so.
That, probably on 604, I'm sure that everybody hits that pod, oh, I do, every time I'm headed toward Death Field, and it's a highly traveled road, and school buses and such, so that definitely needs to be looked at.
I'll definitely pass that along.
Anything else? Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next item is the DEQ Erosion Sediment Control Plan, hope you've had a chance to look at that. On the sign word DEQ, we'll review plans for any solar project exceeding five megawatts, so we will.
Can we back up for authorization to move forward on the abandonment?
We can, yeah. We will do that. How should we word the motion to, just to move forward?
Just the necessary means to move forward.
We need a motion to move forward with this abandonment process, and Ms. Cady eventually, I guess, to advertise, whatever we need to do, whatever they recommend we do, we will do. So anyway, do we have a motion to move forward with this?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Ms. Sue made a motion, Mr. Brick is second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Going back to this, DEQ Erosion Sediment Control Plan, for the most part, DEQ, I'm not big on getting them involved in anything, but I'm best, we probably need to. You want to discuss, Bill, you want to hit us on this a little bit, so, I mean, I know what's going on, so the public will know, and maybe the board, or you're too afraid of one of you, sadly.
On this request, we reached out to Matt Wood, and he suggested that we select the selection, letting DEQ review the plans for a solar project if we have one that's over fit, five megawatts. And they have added staff in Richmond with DEQ to do these reviews. So I would just need authorization to complete the form, check in the box that the locality does request they have DEQ review the erosion sediment control plan.
Yeah, I think it's good idea too, but it takes, but they have probably more of the experts on this stuff, and, but it would take some of the pressure off of local folks, and I'm sure DEQ will do good with it, so. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion to approve this process with DEQ, do we have a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dugger's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 12, the VA Code Voting Prudential, I'm going to go up there in November, it's in Norfolk, I hate driving in Norfolk, but anyway, I will go do that, but I need to be authorized to, as a representative of this board, to have the vote. as a representative of this board, to have the voting credentials, and they have a business meeting on that Tuesday, so do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Scrubby made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
An aye, standing. Next item is Board of Equalization. I did, I sent the information, one person I talked about, he said he would serve. That's Jack Compton. Has he submitted anything on it, application or anything?
There's not an application.
There's not, just they agreed it's all you need, okay. I couldn't remember, I told him I couldn't remember, but anyway, he said he would serve on it, and so, Sal, you wanna take this and if we need to do anything different from what we're doing?
We need eight names, that's all I know.
How many did you need?
We have two, and I did speak to Mr. Carter, and he's not able to serve because that will be during softball season, and he is an assistant coach. And a lot of the meetings are during the day, and that's been the hangup with the people that I have reached out to in the community. It's the schedule, it's just pretty intense. So as of right now, we have Jack Sanders and Jack Compton, and we also have an alternate. So we need four more names for the equalization board and another alternate. Those notices will go out November 19th, so then the process will be for the assessors to hear any complaints from the citizens, once they get their new reassessment notice. So we'll need, by November meeting, we'd really need to have our names nailed down, because you will submit those to the judge for approval to the equalization board, and they'll have to have time for training and setting a schedule with those type of things to be advertised.
So we need four more and then one alternate, correct?
Yes.
Folks, beat the bush, we gotta get this done. What happens if you don't get, I mean, is anybody in uncharted territory? I think Lisa McCarty would do great on it. She shook her head no, it's like it's, I mean, it's not, pretty busy, aren't you?
Very.
Yeah, I knew you were. I'm just jerking a chain a little bit. Folks, we gotta get out there. I don't know. It's hard to get people right now. I spent 30 minutes getting through the drive-through, and Hardee's is one. Two people I could work there, so it's just been an issue everywhere, so I don't know. Need help. Marshall, you'd serve if you went on this board, but I wouldn't. I know you would. All right.
We can kick him off a month or two.
Temporary leave of absence.
Yeah.
You know, and I, people, I mean, they're taking it serious, and when people come, it's, but, you know, because they have concerns about the property, and I see probably gonna be a few more than usual because I believe some increases gonna take place, but anyway, we'll get through that when the time comes, but.
But something that might work out to the equalizations board, so benefit the appraisal. People said that they were gonna take the blunt of it, you know, so maybe.
Majority, yes.
Maybe that.
Yeah.
Maybe it won't be the way it has been in the past.
And I have had discussions with Mr. Thomas, and the dates that we had last time, he thinks half of those should be sufficient. So the schedule's pretty intimidating, if you look at what we did in 2016, but he feels, you know, start with half of that as your schedule, and if you see that you need more, we can add more at the end, but to carve that schedule down originally.
I've got a couple of names, well, I've tried. I've been turned down three times.
I've been turned down five, so.
That makes me feel better.
I just asked Dave, the old B.C. lives in Tennessee, can we move him over here temporarily? Gotta be, gotta live here today. Thank you, no problem, but he did. He said he lives in Tennessee. He couldn't.
I live here all day, okay.
I know you would. All right, any other discussion on this?
I'll just keep working, see if we can find people.
All right.
And it was advertised, pretty big section in the newspaper, two ways, and we didn't hear from anyone.
They, they do have to have a fiscal address in the county, or can they just own property in the county?
No, they have, I think that's a citizen's town.
Have, so have a fiscal address.
Citizens of the county.
What about the, we don't have anybody that's a realtor or anything, do any of the, you know, criteria?
Not at this time. It can be realtor or finance, banking, professional, either or.
If we don't get any of them, can we use whatever? I guess that's what I'm asking.
If we don't get the names, we'll just, before November, we'll research and see what happens if you don't have the requirement. Let's just get them. Then we don't have to do it, you know.
We'll try hard.
Requirement by the code, so let's, yeah.
Try hard, all right. All right, next item is item 14, Cliff Mountain Phase Two Water Project Resolution. Mr. Campbell is here, so if you would.
You also have these on your tablets, and there's a corrective one for Falen Hollow in your packets, your extra packet.
First, my Cliff Mountain Phase Two. How you doing?
I'm well, sir. How are you?
Missed you on Monday night. They said you called in sick or something.
No, I just discovered I didn't need to be there, so I.
Hey, I don't blame you.
I found something, I found something else to do.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I do. Shoot, I'm just messing.
I wasn't on the agenda, so I just did the shadows.
And you do, Alice, he does a good job, little Mr. Scrubby, you know, see. How long you been there, long?
Next, and over the 12th will be 30 years.
Wow.
Wow.
So, it's been a while.
Been a while. You've been familiar with this, but anyway, welcome.
I appreciate that. I can't work for a little still playing, Mr. Commission. You have two resolutions that I'm presenting for your consideration for two community development block grant applications. I was here last month, and we discussed those briefly. One is a resubmital, who wanted, one is first chair on the agenda, one is a resubmital of an application for some funds for essentially the next phase beyond the Black Gun project that we've been working on so steadfastly over the last bit, and that, that particular project, we would be requesting $440,000 CBT funding. By the way, on that one and the, and the other, those ask amounts are the maximum level for each project, and it's based on the maximum cost per connection, based on the number of connections that we would anticipate under those projects. So if you're wondering where those numbers come from, the Cliff Mountain is $440,000. If I may just get to the other project, Mr. Chairman, Falen Hollow Water.
Right.
It's, it's part of a, a project that, that your PSA is, has been putting together called a multi-community project. And in having discussions with them, we discovered that at least a piece of this Falen Hollow piece had a, met the lower moderate income guidelines to be a block grant project, which is, you know, which is the primary focus of the CBT program in Virginia. And so, we've been working with the PSA and their engineers on the piece of that. So from PSA's standpoint, Falen Hollow is one of two pieces of a, of a multi-community project, but again, this one would qualify for CBT funding, because actually, as I understand it, it is a, of the very few households they propose to serve on that, on that particular project, it is 100% a lot of projects, so that will bode well in the scoring piece of it, so. But anyway, so I, I do ask your consideration of the, of the resolutions for each of these applications. Since I was here last, in fact, just in the last week, I think, we've been told the official date for these applications actually is a little later than we thought. It's gonna be December 1st, so.
Good.
These will, these will go in honor before that time, just a function of getting everything, all the, all the necessary stuff to put together to submit these two. But again, I, I am here just to ask your, your consideration of those two particular resolutions for these two particular applications. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
The one thing on, a lot of the bid, when they're opening the bids, it's a lot higher than what they anticipated, and they're dealing with it, you know, appropriately, but it's a struggle to get these, cost of these projects within what they were approved, the amount that they were approved to pay.
I would classify that as an understatement, Mr. Chairman. It's, you know, he has good jobs.
I've heard of one project that, at four million, they've come in at seven million, the, when they, well, the bids, I don't know if it's gonna be a problem. It's not just here, I mean, it's other, everywhere they're having these issues where that's happening.
And I think supplies, too. I think the pipe on the, on the Black Gun, right, is supposed to be in what, next month, maybe?
I heard this morning it is confirmed November.
November, okay, great. I mean, we're at a time now even getting water line, it's hard to do, and so it's a struggle to get this stuff, and, but, you know. All right, anything else for Mr. Campbell? All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll do this separately. First, we'll do the Cliff Mountain Phase Two Water Project Resolution. And the last part of it, I'm sure you have read this, is now, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Scott County, Virginia, that the county administrators hereby authorized to sign and submit any and all appropriate documents relevant to this, to this Virginia community development block grant proposal. That's just the modern part of the resolution, so we need a motion to approve this, and this for Cliff Mountain, over Cliff Mountain.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stewart made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scrubby second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The second one, I'll do the same thing, I'll do the part of it. This is the Falen Hollow Water Project. You heard the amounts given, it's the same language at the bottom of it, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Scott County, Virginia, that the Scott County administrators hereby authorized to sign and submit any and all appropriate documents relevant to the Virginia Community Development Block Grant Proposal adopted this date, 6th day of October 2021. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dugger second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you coming. Next item is the Town of Weber City. Do we have someone here to speak for the Town of Weber City?
They just made their request last month, and if you are interested in taking action, we need to go ahead and get their questions.
Say again? I didn't hear the last part.
You just need to go ahead and answer their questions, if there's action that you wanna take with their two requests.
Uh, the, dealing with the, the building official, or, you know, we have the, the cost of that and the other was the sign issue. I think you recommended, Mr. Dinges, that if they could do the signs, we could provide the labor to get the signs put in place for them. Is that was your recommendation?
I think, yes, that's what Mrs. Darns came up with.
Yeah, somebody, I seen it, but I couldn't remember if you were Miss Darns, but anyway, I seen. I think it's a good idea because they don't have a construction crew to install those signs, so we could do that for them. Are they agreeable to that?
But if I can reach out to them, if that's what the board desires to do, and see if that would work for them.
Well, to put this, to put it behind us and go on, and we go ahead and do this, and we can pick it back up later if not, but I think that would probably be the way to go with this, and if they're agreeable to it, and I think it probably would be. As far as the, I think Ms. Kegley done an excellent job on researching the historical matters they've had in the past on a building official. And did you say, Bill, if it's over 3,500, they'd have their own building official?
3,600.
3,600?
3,500.
3,500. And so, assuming some of the cost of that, I think is, there's a reason it's that way, and I think we should keep that in place. My thoughts on that. So, anyway, your honest thoughts here before, I think you go ahead and vote on this.
I'll make a motion, and we'll go with what Miss Darns, take them in.
All right. All right, Mr. Dugger made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the, is the meal tax. We have discussed some. The county is now authorized to do that. They're talking about restaurants out in the county. I know Gate City has put in place an increase on the meal tax in the, within the incorporated parts of the town. So discussion, or Miss Darns, or Miss Kaylee, the one want to discuss this more?
The first thing we need to do to implement the meals tax is for you to set a rate that you want to implement, and then we will work on getting the ordinance together, specifying that, and advertising for the public hearing. So we would need for you to discuss and decide on what rate. 6% is the maximum, and then authorization to move forward.
Some of the other counties with 5%, I think I saw that somewhere, but they actually with 5% instead of the 6. You know, when you eat out somewhere, I don't pay any taxes for the tax. I get a good meal, and I don't. Some may, the restaurants may not be too crazy about us doing anything, but it is a revenue source, I think, that we, that we probably need to put in place, whatever the amount would be. But on the board, your honest thoughts?
Gate City's the only place that has a meal tax.
I think so.
Gate City, Weber City, and Duffield.
What's that rate?
I don't know what their rate is. Our rate would not be on top of theirs. If the towns have a meals tax, we would not be adding extra.
Not gonna have a whole one. Get cooked, okay?
Or what, much as that?
Yeah, there's more than you think. Duffield has several. Hardee's and Chubbies are the only ones that I'm aware of that are in the town. You would have McDonald's, and you'd have two feet's of plus, Duffield and Nicholsville, Teddy's, Hognob, and then your, like Rally Mart gas stations that have the meals inside.
Weber City, too?
Weber City has a meals tax, so that would be.
Okay.
If you all wanna go with this, like, there's gotta be, I guess, a public hearing on the establishment ordinance on the amount, and how do we proceed?
Could you just give us authorization to advertise? I'm not sure if we'd need to have two fellow hearings, one for a tax increase on its own, and then one for the ordinance? So it may be.
We'll research that, and we can authorize you to advertise when you, and leave it up to your discretion, what we need to do with that.
Okay.
But, like I said, I don't, I think it would be something that we need to pursue. And the cigarette tax, too, to get this regional thing, I had to bring it up in Little Whiskel, then I forgot it. This regional approach on the cigarette tax, rather than the county do a standalone tax on it. It's pretty complicated. Each pack has to have a tax sticker on it, so it can get pretty hard. The regional approach, I think, would be the best way to go with that on cigarettes. But getting back to the meals tax, the amount, that y'all would be, would want, do we have to advertise the amount? I guess you would, but, yeah. Can we decide that today?
Decide the rate?
The other rate?
You'd need to.
All right. All righty. Let's hear from the board.
Six is the.
That's the maximum.
Maximum.
Some of the other counties with 5, and I, I, the only reason I said that, that's what they did, not saying we have to do what they do. You can go up to 6, or if you wanna go below 5, it's up to this board, what y'all, what propose.
I wouldn't be interested in what Gate City and Weber City does, but I might go with, just go with 6.
Full amount?
No.
It'd be easier to come down than go up.
Yeah.
True.
You could always decrease.
If we advertise 6, could we, could it be less than 6 if we?
You can do less, you can't do more.
All right, that's a good point. Thank you. Very good point. All right. So we need to vote on the increase, to authorize her to advertise whenever the time comes. We can authorize her to do the, once she researches it, if it's way to go, to, we do it all in one motion, 6 cents, and then allow her to do the advertising and the local thing. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Scrubby made a motion at 6%, correct?
Yes.
Second.
All right, Mr. Scrubby and Mr. Bricky, 6%, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
We're authorized in advertising.
Yes, yes, part, as part of the motion, yes.
Yes. 6% of that.
And I know that any time that you increase taxes, you wanna hear about it, so. You'll get some good press down there, too, with it, so. All right, anything else? We'll go to, we'll go to. We'll go to, like, we'll go to, uh, bookkeeping, this item.
Please appropriate two hundred and thirty-six thou, two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars to collections, capital, outlet, equipment, four two three three zero dash eighty-one oh five for the Truist Bank reimbursement received at the Treasury's Treasurers Office, and appropriate five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-five cents to share travel conferences, three one two zero zero dash five five four zero for reimbursement received at the Treasury's Treasury Office.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the appropriations described by Ms. Dieter?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, Mr. Dipson made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Karen, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is appointments, uh, Ms. Kimble can say if you would.
We have one appointment to make to the Tourism Committee, Roger Carter is in serving that committee, it's been reviewed.
May I have any nominations to the Tourism Committee?
Nominate Roger Carter.
Any other nominations?
I'm making motion, nomination cease, support by affirmation.
Okay. Mr. Dipson made a motion, nomination cease, support by affirmation, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Karen, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Uh, County Attorney, Adams, Ms. Kegley.
I don't really have anything, I'm happy to answer any questions. I wanted to make two comments, or, not two, just a couple of comments about the campground. Um, the FEMA guidelines allow to lease it, um, maybe lease for agricultural uses, provided no buildings or structures are erected. I just wanna point that out, it's not a lease open-ended for whatever they wanna do on it. Those are the guidelines in the deed, to do anything else, you'd be going against that in FEMA. Um, also, it was never mentioned during the special use permit process that leasing the county property would make or break that campground. They presented that as on their parcel of land, they had landscape architect, very well presented, put a lot of work and effort and planning into it, but it was on their parcel, no mention, I know that there was mention, but I think it was understood at the time that it had to be on their parcel, and the county property couldn't be used as part of the campground. So I just wanted to point those couple of things out, I didn't wanna, uh, contradict or hash it out when they were here, but I wanted to make you all aware of those couple of things.
It's important to know that, um, you know, so.
So it could be used for agriculture and what?
Agricultural uses. That's it.
So, that, that campground would be agriculture uses, would it?
No.
But that, that, that's not be, not gonna be part of the campground, it's just part of a sewer system that they're wanting to, it's not.
But once you lease it, you cede control of the property.
I've got a brain follow, but the committee that looked at this, sent us, here's, what?
Planting Commission?
Yeah, did the Planting Commission, did they look at both plans they had before? The plan of just going on their property and putting in a sewer system on their property, or look at?
Sewer didn't come up.
With the Planting Commission?
No, it should have. All these things have come up since approval of the special use permit.
Should it go back to the Planting Commission, or just let us decide it?
Yeah, I think you all just need to decide it. I mean, the use is allowed, um, now, from both, both boards, so that's okay, it's just a matter of the details.
Are the owners aware of this, that, that they can't do anything except agricultural?
She says she's read the deed, so I assume.
And the special use permit is for the one parcel, she mentioned another parcel, I think that is a different parcel number.
It is, and they also say they're landlocked, to get to that, they've had access to that all alone.
Well, it's on their property, if it's all in one piece, I, I didn't understand that either.
Yeah, but that's not part of the campground, it can't be, 'cause it's a different parcel number.
Well, as bad as it is, they probably could use it anyway, I looked at it, it would take a lot of great work, stuff they ever do that, I, I can't imagine using that for anything.
If they wanted to do the general store or whatever, she's saying that would be another special use permit process.
They'd have to have a right of way to it, so that would be across the, probably across the county property to get to that, where that store they want to put in?
Uh, they have access.
Yeah, but, yeah, they do, but I wonder if they want to come in, across that county property to get to it?
That's something to be looked at, then.
Yeah. We'll look after our Monday, Will.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, I think Bill broke, you know, the, the option with the, uh, both of the, uh, what do you call it, the plan?
The plan.
Yeah, which cost-wise would be the same, or maybe just a little bit less, you know, would accommodate, you know, what they're trying to do.
I know they're getting frustrated, uh, and I understand, but we're limited to, uh...
You know, I, I had talked to somebody about it beforehand, before all this come up, and you know, that, that, that come up, and you know, I was all, I was okay with it at first, until I found out that other people had tried to lease that before.
Right.
And we didn't, well, whoever had made that decision didn't allow them to do that. Uh, you know, we'd really, I, I feel like we'd have to be really careful, 'cause you might open up a can of door, or a can of worms here, that...
You're setting a precedent.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, I, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with anybody using it, you know, not Bill and, you know, of course, to a certain extent, you can't just go in there and do whatever, but to go in there and have a picnic, anybody that is around that property, I, yeah, that's fine, that's okay, but, and, you know, to put a sewer system in there, you know, it, what, of course, this, I know this would be under the health department's thing, let's say that did flood, you know, who would, and, and that caused problems downstream, and they linked that back to that sewer system, uh, if it damaged somebody's well, or, uh, would we be responsible for that? You know, there's, there's a lot of things there, I think we need to make sure that we're, that, that we wouldn't be responsible for.
That's one agreement we'd need to address.
Yeah.
What about the possibility of the county selling?
We can.
Okay, I answered that.
I was gonna ask the same thing, I, I was gonna ask the anti-later. We can't get rid of it?
Can we give it away? All right.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am, good job. Next item is our County Administrator items, and we'll do claims for, Ms. Starnes.
Your green sheet is in your extra folder, your treasurer's accountability report, available cash after claims, three million, three hundred and thirty thousand, seventy dollars and sixteen cents. We have a lot of claims for this month, we had early claims totaled eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and eighty-three cents, and some of those bigger ones was Armstrong Construction for two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, that was a payment for the fire training facility, Scott County Economic Development, a hundred and ninety-two thousand, four twenty-eight fifteen for loan payment, and Scott County Telephone, three hundred thousand, that was with, uh, Arca and Carisak Fund. So, current claims, uh, a lot of these are quarterly payments or monthly payments for , uh, normal things that we do every month. Gate City Volunteer Fire Department did give their allocation of thirty-eight thousand, two fourteen fourteen, Scott County Life Saving Group, thirty-five thousand, one fifty, and then Win Grade Appraisal, uh, we had a payment to them of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So, total claims for the month, one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-two cents, is what needs to be approved for today.
All this come out, you still got three?
Correct, yes.
We can make it through, over the twentieth. Do we have any idea why the tax tickets haven't been sent out yet, like?
They have been mailed, uh, they were mailed on Monday, so they should be, uh...
Like, they're out in September, concerning tonight, I haven't gotten it, so.
Uh, we were, I do know, we, that office was closed for a week, uh, with COVID issues, so that, um, did a week, but besides that, that's the only thing that I'm aware of that would have been different, uh, but they have been mailed and should be received this week.
Think if they're closed or working inside, they could get more done and get them, kind of, quicker if they need.
They were not working, so the office was closed because of COVID.
Well, I thought maybe they just closed to the public, but they weren't even working that week. I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just saying.
They could not be in the office working, they had COVID and had to close the office.
I'm not with you. All righty. How many times have you closed this office since COVID began?
The County Administrator's office? None.
Okay, that's all I'll say about that. Anyway, the, the amount is one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-five cents, we're okay, we're pretty good shape as far as what we have right now in the bank to run through November, the, the twentieth, uh, anyway.
A little over a million less than last year.
Yeah. That's probably cause last year, the tax tickets went out about the middle of September, since September, uh, when they went out, and so people start sending their payments, and probably it was, might have been a little bit of a difference, but that was about.
We also have a difference.
I just got mine yesterday.
Pardon?
I just got mine yesterday.
Okay.
I noticed.
Mine's probably there today.
We also have a difference because last year we got a pretty good-sized regional jail reconciliation.
True.
Check-in, for this year we didn't want, so that makes a difference, 'cause if you look at the fiscal year nineteen and twenty, we're still above where we were those two years.
Right.
Yeah, pretty different.
Yep. Still, that, even the, what we got approved today is just, is an unusually high number of, uh, so, any questions or comments for Miss Starnes?
I'll make the motion that we pay the deals.
All right, Ms. Crivie made a motion to pay the deal, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Ricky, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Ms. Laney's?
I have two things under Ms. Laney's, the first is to accept the local emergency management planning grant, uh, this is a grant that we've been fortunate to have, uh, the last several years. The grant amount is thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars with the same amount of match, and match is, uh, our emergency management funds that we put into that program that we have in the county. So, um, we were allowed to use these funds again for fiscal year twenty-two, so I just need authorization to, uh, proceed with any documents needed for the grant acceptance.
Right. Need a motion to allow, uh, Ms. Starnes to do that, do you have a motion? Ricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Karen, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And the second thing I have is, um, Ms. Kegley, um, received information from Appalachian Community Action that New Peoples Bank needs us to forego first right of refusal on the property that they have at Daniel Bay.
Okay. All righty.
So, what was that, Freda, what did they mean?
Uh, the county has first right of refusal on that property where it was, um, gave to them for a dollar, and anytime that they do anything financial, that they're using the property as collateral for it, we have to do a first right of refusal release, so I believe they were increasing their line of credit, and...
Right, yeah.
So, New Peoples Bank requests that we do, um, do that first right of refusal release.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to do that?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Diplomated motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's a, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Anything else, Ms. Starnes?
That's all I have, thank you.
Before we do the presentation about, uh, the France, uh, we'll take a quick break, and so we'll do that. One thing, I have, have to leave, I got an appointment at eleven oh five, they moved it to the high appointment, so Ms. Crivie's gonna, in my stead, she's gonna be here, so I do need to go, so, anyway. Hate to miss your presentation.
It's your turn, please.
All right.
We're gonna have a break.
Yeah. Bye.
We are back in session, and I guess now we will go to item twenty-two on our agenda, a presentation by Mr. Derek France. Thank you.
Good to see everybody. Ms. Star, thanks for having me. You did a great job already.
Thank you.
As usual, I'll kind of keep it short and sweet, October's, this is kind of a thing to start getting a little bit slower from me anyways. On the rest apartment side, Kefor Park, there are some long-term grant opportunities to take a look at, see what we could do there with some improvements there at the park. Thanks to your all's support, the park looks great, there's been numerous improvements that y'all know about out there, so, thank you, thank you, and thank you to the senior group right there that does a lot of work for us, so, it does look great. Down at Southwood Community Park, initial talks, do some improvements down there, some minor improvements, gotta get some help with Scott Service to do that, nothing major there, just some little, some little projects that'll help that part down there. Normally, right now, I would be my second week of our youth volleyball. I made a decision to cancel that, it was a hard decision to make, it's probably one of the funnest things we do, it's probably one of our biggest, numbers-wise, has our biggest participation, but the big reason I did cancel that, we are mixed grades, it's second through fourth grade as a group, fifth through seventh, and even sometimes we have mixed schools, kids may be on teams that are in different schools, and the vast majority of my participants are under twelve, so they cannot be vaccinated, and just with how things are currently with schools and the young kids, I think it was the right call. The feedback has been, you know, hey, we hate it, we absolutely want to do it, but we understand, so I think I made the right decision, it's only a hard decision to make though, because, I mean, that's what I do, that's the fun part of my job. Hopefully, you know, February, March is when we do our youth basketball, I hope we can return to normal by then, things will make the climates a little bit better by then, I hope, so, unfortunately, that's, you know, I wouldn't be talking about how good a volleyball league's going, but. Hoping down here to the park and golf course information, there has been a small decrease over the same period of time as last year, not too worried about that for a couple of reasons. First, the course was closed for a week, an entire weekend, due to some greens maintenance and a pretty major water pump failure that I'll talk about later. That was one reason. Another one, too, you know, the last few times I've been out here, the numbers have been vastly, vastly improved, so, you know, last fiscal year was our highest revenue in almost a decade. We're very close to that, so I'm not too worried, I mean, I think we're still poised to have a very good year, it's just, you know, we had our, by leaps and bounds, one of our best years last year, so it's understandable to have a small, I'm not worried about the increase, it's a very small amount, so. Course currently is in great shape, it's actually in such good shape, the public, the members are really pushing for us to have a late fall, even early winter tournament, so I think we're gonna host, try to host a late October tournament, something there, so, it's kind of something we haven't done, usually by now people are slowing down, but they're still fired up about it, want to play, the course looks great, so they're wanting an October tournament, so. And then, really, lastly, I do want to thank Bill Dingus, Randall Davidson, Anthony Williams, Public Works, that water pump failure that we had, that's probably one of the most stressful times since I've been here as an assistant director and director. I'll kind of break you through that process. First off, we had a water pump failure, we have a water pump that pushes water out to all the irrigation at the greens. So, basically, what happened there, we had a water pump failure while we were doing a greens aerification, and that's where I go through, and I put holes in the greens, we fill them in with sand, and then we water them, water them, water them, water them. Well, the day we need to go water them, it's a pump failure, that's the worst day of the year, the three hundred sixty-five days of the year, the worst day it could have failed it did. And the bad news is, like, we, I think Mr. Tipton talked about supply chain stuff, that pump we need, it's about a sixty to ninety day leak time on it, so, there are other pumps, but it would require us, how our system's set up, we need that pump, the same pump we have, basically. So, during that time, like I said, Bill, Randall, Anthony, especially Randall, was with us up there, like, I know me and Brad were there a couple nights, twelve, thirteen hours, just trying to find a solution because we really did not want to lose those greens. But basically, what happened, a local farmer who's a good friend of the golf course, allowed us to borrow a portable gas pump, it's not perfect, it's had some issues, we've had a lot of mishaps with it, but it's a temporary fix, it's working, we were able, what I call save the greens, I'm not saying we did, but I was really terrified of losing the greens. The reason I'm terrified of losing the greens up there, the cost to rebuild a golf green now is about thirty to forty thousand dollars per green, and that's insane, and I know it's something we can't afford, so, that was probably the first time I thought, man, we might really be in trouble, but we were able to find a solution, so thank you to Bill and his crew, but, and thank you to the local person that helped us as well, that's kind of everybody coming together to help us out, it takes a village, and we definitely appreciate everybody that helped with us, so. Those greens are kind of what makes us up there, you know, it's a very hilly course, it's an odd home course, we have a lot of things going against us, our one advantage we have over probably everybody is our greens. I see it, I see other courses, but the public tells us all the time, hey, these are the best greens, I mean, they really are, our greens are fantastic, that's kind of our, our draw up there, so, that's, that's a big focus for us, so, to keep those and not, it's such a relief, that was, that was a bad time, so, things are so much better now. That's really all I have, we're getting, obviously, like I said, going into one of our slower seasons, but I just hope we can get back to some normal with the, with the rest stuff, because I know it's, it's killing me, I know it's killing a lot of our kids not being out there doing that stuff, but I think the parents understand, so, that's, that's all I have, I'll answer any questions.
I understand, fantastic job to these, to these folks, and everybody coming together.
Randall was there when he was off. Randall came in, I mean, Randall was, Randall, Randall really, he didn't give up on it, we didn't either, but he didn't give up, he, he helped us see through it, so.
Good job.
Yep. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
And now we will go into the comments, requests, and recommendations from our board. I'll start with you, Mr. Jeter.
Hi, good.
Okay, Mr. Tipton?
Just wanted to thank all of the staff and, and Fred and Bill, and Amy and Tina, and our county attorney for all that they do, and all of our staff. And I, I like the question that was posed to our county administrator earlier, when asked a question about how many days that they'd been closed, and it was zero days.
Agreed.
So, appreciate y'all.
Very good. Anything else? Mr. Herron?
Appreciate what everybody's doing, you know, I've got a list of stuff for VDOT, but we'll, I'm gonna try to work that up and try to get that to them, I won't spend a lot of time with that, but, something I brought up the last two or maybe even three meetings is county raises, you know, and I didn't realize Danny was gonna be leaving, so, but we really need to keep this on our mind, you know, I would, I'd like to propose that we go ahead and do that, starting January first, and we amend the budget to include that three percent CO, cost of living, you know, all of us have worked in places, I think that, you know, that you receive cost of living raises, and if my mind serves me right, I mean, the, the, the pay scale for the employees here in the county has not been changed since two thousand and four, I think. I think, does that, does that sound, I might be misspeaking on that, but anyway, you can look at it. But, you know, that's, that's something we need to look at, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to get people to drive these garbage trucks, you know, where you have to have CDLs starting out at whatever they start out at, twenty-five thousand, whatever that would be. Our nine-one-one people, you know, if you remember, just recently, we went through, I don't know how many dispatch, of course, it takes a special person to do that, I understand that too, but, you know, but, but all, all of our employees here in the county, I, I feel deserve that, and, and, you know, for them to think that since they've, they've not been receiving that, that that's okay, you know, that's not okay.
No.
You know, the further, the, the, the more time we spend not giving them that raise, the more behind they get, and in the future, it's gonna be harder and harder to get somebody to fill these positions. And I was gonna make a motion today for us to vote on that, but since Danny left, I'll wait till next month, but I want you all to seriously think about it. January first, I think we need to amend the budget, include their three percent cost of living raises. Am I saying that right, Sally? Okay. So, I'll, I'll wait till next meeting to do that, so just be prepared.
So, you do want to wait till Danny's here? I mean, we don't necessarily have to, I guess is what I was gonna say, is...
Well, I, I've not talked it over with him, so he, he don't, I'd sort of be blindsiding him, so I feel like he needs to be here too.
Okay.
So, we'll, I'll, I'll wait till next month, and we'll see, see how that goes. But, anyway, appreciate what everybody's doing, appreciate what the board's done, you know, we, we need to get some good people for this equalization board, I've got a couple more in mind, I'll try to, try to, but I, I can see a lot of them's point, I mean, you know, especially now more than ever since I've been on this board for two years, but glad to have Mike back.
Thank you.
At, at... But, but, anyway, y'all think about that, and then that's, that's my plan for next meeting.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bricky?
Okay. Just want to say I want to thank all of you for hanging in there with me, you know, and Fred and Sally not giving up on me, it's quite a, quite a battle, and I am out of the loop right now, I really need to try to catch up, but I've got a few questions that, that in my mind I just don't understand. I, I consider our role as supervisors to look after the taxpayers. Voters, yes, but taxpayers, and under our, under that umbrella of taxpayers... And under our, under that umbrella of taxpayers is, look at all the different committees we're on, all the different agencies we serve, and it's unbelievable. Okay, that's what I think we're responsible, who we're responsible to is the taxpayers in Scott County.
Yes.
Okay, now, the way I look at the school board, their responsibility is educating students in Scott County.
Yes.
And that's what I don't understand. They're, under their umbrella, they're supposed to take care of our kids, not kids from out of county. And I use "out of county" because sometimes, you know, I saw on the TV that several weeks ago, I don't know when it was, that there was a hundred kids coming over from Tennessee. Well, within a few weeks, there was a report came out that there was four hundred and fifteen from Tennessee that they can verify, because their address is from Tennessee, and they're coming from Tennessee, but there's two hundred plus possibly that are out of county that are coming also. That's six hundred. Danny mentioned thirteen thousand a year it costs us to educate each student in Scott County. I looked it up on the internet earlier, because I didn't know, and I saw a figure of ten thousand five hundred dollars per student each year in Scott County. If there's six hundred out of county, Tennessee plus others that can't be verified, that have addresses outside of Scott County, ten thousand five hundred times six hundred is six million three hundred thousand per year that we're educating from out of county. Okay? If a student enrolls in kindergarten and goes through the school system, thirteen years for one student K through 12, that's a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred, and you can check my math. Out of county, if there's six hundred students that follow that same route, times one hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred, that's eighty-one million six hundred thousand dollars that Scott County, that Scott County taxpayers are paying out each year, I'm sorry, in a thirteen-year period, eighty-one million six hundred thousand. Now, you say, you know, one of the talking points that's coming out from certain places is that Scott County doesn't pay that much in taxes. But, this amount right here is being paid by county and state taxes. It's being paid by our taxpayers through their county and state taxes. I don't care if they're getting it locally or they're getting it from the state, this amount's being paid from Virginia.
Yes.
I think, I think the number one role of our school board is to educate our students. Other activities are extracurricular. And, we're all looking at our football teams that are having a rough time, Raico, I field Raico, because that was principal that ten years. And they're saying the enrollment's dropped, and they can't get football players. It's not dropped that much. I don't know, because I, like I say, I'm out of the loop, but I bet if you look back, it's not dropped much over the last few years. It's just that our students have so much else to do, our kids do. Another thing we need to look at, these six hundred kids, four fifteen from Tennessee that are coming here, they compete with our Scott County kids for any awards at the end of the year. Anything that goes on in the year, they're competing with our students here in Scott County. And, whether that's fair or not, it's up to the voters and the taxpayers to decide. County paper, Lisa's gone. There was two different things in there that I questioned. One was a chart that looked at the ten-day enrollment. School starts, and then ten days later, the principal send in how many students, they go, that's a ten-day enrollment. And, it was said, well, they didn't come over from Tennessee like we thought. Okay, take that ten-day enrollment and write it down somewhere, next March, March 31st ADM, compare it to that instead of ten-day enrollment, and see how many kids come in. Also, they, in that chart, it compared the ten-day enrollment of this year for seven or eight years past, which was the March 31st ADM, not the ten-day enrollment. So, that's comparing apples to oranges, and you can't really tell what's happening this year by that. If, and it's not just Tennessee, I know Washington County, possibly other counties in Virginia are sending students here. And I know Washington County charges an enrollment fee, tuition, whatever you want to call it, and I found out that there is a difference, I didn't know that, that there was a difference in paying tuition or paying enrollment. Also, something that I wonder about, the March 31st ADM that, from Scott County that goes to the State Department, it has to, in order for us to get money back from the state, I'm wondering about reciprocal agreement, if there should be a reciprocal agreement between us and Tennessee counties, or between us and surrounding counties in state of Virginia. And I'm just behind on some of this stuff that you've probably discussed this summer during all this, and if you have, I apologize for taking up your time with it. But, some of these, this stuff, I just don't understand. One of the talking points that the school board puts out is, if we don't get an enrollment fee or tuition from the kids coming over from Tennessee and the extra kids, we're going to lose ninety teachers, we're going to lose bus drivers, we're going to lose cafeteria workers. The way I look at it, those people that will lose their jobs are here to educate out of county Tennessee kids. And, I know the school board can't do this in one year, but, this is the school board that needs to start something. They need to start somewhere through attrition or through looking at kindergarten kids or looking, you know, rating it on a scale from K through 12, as far as enrollment goes. This is the board, instead of saying, we're not going to do anything, come on in. They need to start looking at all this stuff. And I don't know that they have. There's two ways you can look at it. You can look at it like, we're going to lose ninety teachers, we're going to lose this and that. But, if you look at it the other way, our taxpayers are the biggest employer here in Scott County, because they're paying for these teachers that are teaching Tennessee kids, either through local or state taxes. And, that's just, it's been on my mind, you know, I was in education in Scott County for forty years, and I feel for them, I really do. I really appreciate what you went through with the raises, but, I just think the school board needs to look at some stuff. We don't control the school board at all, and they're on their own, but I'd like them to just take a look at it from all angles, and just not one angle. Mr. McCaskin?
When I was at my first school board meeting, I brought this up. And I was told point blank, I don't know who was, is the person turned the board, he says, well, you know what, that's tough. This is the way it's always been, this is the way it's always going to be. I've got the impression, pardon my language, but I don't think those idiots give a damn about the people, the schools of Scott County. And I looked at them and I said, well, just because that's the way it's always been, that doesn't make it right. I honestly felt like I was talking to a brick wall. I spent eleven years in the military, and I have never, I was a prison guard too, I have never come across a bunch more self-centered, self-serving individuals than I have with our school board. And I'm ashamed to say I voted for one of those people.
You know, transparency's been the key word for years now. Transparency with everything. I think we're very transparent with everything. And, I think that should carry over to other boards in the county also.
Agreed.
And if I've said anything to offend anybody, I apologize. If this is something you've already discussed, you know, I apologize for taking up your time, but I just felt that I had to say something. And if I'm wrong, correct me please. Thank you.
Ms. Ed.
Very good comments, Mr. Bricky. I agree with everything you said, and I do think that the Scott County school board needs to become accountable, accountable to the people who reside in Scott County. And that's all I have to say today.
Thank you.
Well, I do, I'll go last here and say that, you know, I appreciate the staff and everything that they do. I will echo what you said about that, because it is, they do need to become more transparent, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, not as a board member, but as a taxpayer. I would appreciate that. And going on with the taxes, I will not let one meeting go where we do not talk about our delinquent taxes and the situation that that's created for us. Because I, you know, that's one issue that I have that burns a hole in my pocket, because we do not do, our current treasurer has told us that she will not be a, what's the word she used? Or, what?
Hardcore.
Hardcore tax collector. Curiosity gets the best of me as to why she wants to do it, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, if you're not going to be a tax collector, there's no, it's black and white, in my opinion, in that situation. You have to pay your taxes or you don't, and you collect your taxes or you don't, and she's not collecting taxes. So, I'll, like I said, I will not let a meeting go where we do not discuss that, or that we do not, that I don't bring that up and make, and continue to press that forward, because there is no accountability to us from the treasurer's office. However, we are responsible for the budget that that, that the tax dollars do bring in. And that's how I, that's the concern and issue that I have, not only as a taxpayer, but as a citizen, and a taxpaying citizen of this county. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you all, though.
Could I just address one thing?
Absolutely.
I appreciate what Mr. Bricky said in reference to the school board, and I don't want to say very much about it, but we had a meeting, and we had come up with some agreement, and then, for some reason that I still don't know about, and it was completely reversed. But, as part of that meeting, we had discussed that we should have open dialogue and be able to, you know, talk between one board and another, and I still think we should. We've got to get back to the point of, you know, communicating, and that I think we should, you know, do. And I hope they'll reach out to us and be willing to do that. We can't play this, you know, tip for tat, you know, things of that nature, and we'll sit down like grown people and be able to have a good discussion and find, you know, common ground, and that's what we should be trying to do. But, at the same time, being open and transparent before the taxpayer.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that's the key, transparency.
Okay. So, we will move right along into, we don't have anything for closed session, really, Ms. Florence?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess that will adjourn us to...
Monday at 5:00.
Monday, the 11th at 5:00 p.m. Where are we going to meet, at Stony Creek, or are we going to meet?
Yeah, I think that's what you all decided.
Is that what we decided?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we will adjourn this meeting to 5 o'clock on Monday, October the 11th, at Stony Creek.
Do we have an address? Some identifying information for the public to know where this meeting's going to be?
It's 3 something Greens Chapel Road. I don't have it in front of me.
Let me see if I can find that on the special use permit. 5 o'clock.
Unless something changes, I won't be able to be there, but I'll try to get him out there.
You go across, you go to the old store and go across the bridge and then take a right, is that, that's where it is?
Do you know where the parking lot is?
Yeah.
Just pass, just stay on that road?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll go.
Instead of turning, like you go to the...
Like you were going to go up on that?
Devil's Bathtub Trailhead, where everybody goes, you just keep right.
Okay.
It's over the hill there, across the next little bridge.
Okay.
Okay. With that said, I guess...
Give me one minute.
Oh, 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 oh. Sorry, I forgot you were looking up the address.
Is there internet access up there where you could use Google Maps to get to it?
Spotty.
I'm going to dial it.
Your maps on your phone would probably take you onto it. They're pretty good about, go ahead and figuring out a route while they got signal to take you to it. We do have Wi-Fi at the...
Parking.
Parking area at Stony Creek Park. It's just, that's probably a little over half a mile from where we're going.
That might be an idea for people to park there and maybe not have so many cars at the site.
Yeah, there's not a lot of places to park where we're going, so that might be best is to meet at Stony Creek Park.
Okay.
So, I don't mind that, Chris. Well, I mean, Greens Chapel Road, Devil's Bathtub, I mean, I guess people...
That'll be the meeting, but we can meet and park at Stony Creek Park.
I'm just thinking about if any of the public wants to come.
Yeah.
We got to make it transparent or it's big.
Yes, yes. So, we will adjourn to Monday at 5:00, which is October the 11th, at the Stony Creek Park, where we will gather in the parking lot and ride together, bus?
Yeah, carpool on.
Carpool onto the actual campsite.
On Greens Chapel?
On Greens Chapel Road. All right.
Thank you. I have no idea where they are, it's my son, and I tried to find it, it was bad, but one time we couldn't find it.